For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of March 18th, 2019. Come to the roll, please.
Hess.
Johnson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noack.
Here.
Walgora.
Here.
The President's speech. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes for open session of March 4th, 2019. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. The only exception tonight would be anyone here for the public hearing for the Besser Senior Living Community. Other than that...
What about the two requests?
Oh, yeah. A gentleman here for the two action items. And the consent agenda this evening is A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $326,608.78; B is a request to forward landfill authority refund to the intergovernmental recycling program; and C is the city council reappointment of Greg Sundin to the City of Alpena Building Authority for a three-year term expiring March 1st, 2022. And will we approve the consent as presented?
Second.
Hess.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Walgora.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, no presentations, announcements, proclamations this evening, so we'll drop right down to item 10, which is a public hearing. This is the Besser Senior Living Community Commercial Rehabilitation District Establishment for Property located at 325 Johnson Street. I'll open the public hearing and hear a report from Planning and Development Director Adam Paul.
Good evening. Late last year, Besser Senior Living Community began the construction of a 47-unit senior assisted living facility west of Besser Museum on property obtained from Alpena Community College. The property for the site consisted of a parking area that had been utilized for the civic center prior to the civic center's demolition, and had been utilized for a number of applications after the civic... Wow, the civic center was demolished. They wouldn't have here. Besser Senior Living Facility will create 48 new jobs and represent a $7 million plus investment for the new construction of the facility. Upon acquisition of the site, the new owners learned that there was a 42-inch storm sewer line that had been installed and no easement had been recorded at the time of installation as the parking area was being utilized for public use as part of the civic center. The 42-inch storm line needed to be moved to allow for the construction of the new assisted living facility. As the cost of moving this large storm sewer line was significant previously unaccounted for cost for development, Besser Senior Living Community is requesting that a commercial rehab rehabilitation district be created with the intent to file an application for a commercial rehabilitation abatement in the future to cover that cost. Staff would request that council conduct a public hearing to establish the commercial rehabilitation district and adopt the enclosed resolution 2019-05. Having talked to the applicants, we're looking at probably a formal two-year payment. They're going to be out of the court, so it's not anything careful.
Okay. And please stay for questions if necessary. Thank you, Adam. I'll open up the public comment. If anyone in the public would like to come up, have anything to add or say topic. Any written comments?
Received at the clerk's office.
None.
So we'll close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. My question, I guess, would be when you say that they're... We would expect that they would want a two-year abatement, so two years of tax abatement would basically equal the cost that they incurred for moving that line? Is that safe to say?
It would be the government. So at this point, they have incurred... They've submitted receipts, invoices for moving the line. We do need a little more clarification from them as far as the breakdown, but at this point, they've incurred $140,000 to move that line. Initially, we were looking at a two-year being probably more like $80,000 to $100,000. Because this year, the first year is not going to be completed project, there won't be a full tax year.
Okay.
I was just curious, did something change in the resolution that we have another copy of it?
Yes.
Okay.
There was a small inclusion in the legal description that was removed. Was a type of case here, but that is... Appreciate you. Twenty to the L.
On that cost of that, they can submit receipts and stuff like that, would be comparable to moving that line. I mean, we're... I don't know how much it would cost. That sounds awful high to be right off the bat.
Yeah, it was a little higher than we initially estimated. The initial response from dealers was that it was a lot more rock than they had anticipated, but we are looking to give them a breakdown of that invoice cost before we process the actual application, so they're in process of getting us that.
And then they would just go through the application process as anyone would?
Yeah, it's a two-step process. First, we create the district, and then they apply the application, fix in, and then we decide to get the application through.
Okay. Sounds reasonable. Any other questions?
Will we approve resolution 2019-05?
Just real quick before we vote, there is a necessity to read the entire resolution.
To read it?
No.
It basically says what...
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is a report of officers. A is the amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement.
One, this is the first and probably only amendment I would be requesting. My employment agreement with the city, which is dated May 7th of 2013, states that I receive employee benefits equivalent to those received by the city's department heads and administrative employees with the same years of service. This includes city health insurance. Currently, for me, the most economical plan is a high deductible health savings account plan, which is what about 95% of the employees are in. For the 2018 calendar year, the city contributed $3,000 to my and all other employees' HSAs, $2,000 in January, $1,000 in July with the same plan. The same contribution is scheduled for calendar year 2019. As a sure sign of time catching up with me beginning February 1st, I am now enrolled in Medicare Part A, and under federal law, once on Medicare, I am no longer permitted to contribute myself or have others, such as the employer, contribute to my HSA. Consequently, I am not eligible to receive the $3,000 city contribution to my HSA for calendar year 2019 that other employees with the same plan will be receiving. Since this is due to no fault of my own, I respectfully request that council consider the following. In lieu of the $3,000 HSA contribution, the city contributed an additional $3,000 to my 457B deferred compensation plan. This would not be made until July of 2019 and would be included in the city's 2019-20 fiscal year budget. The payment will be in addition to the normal city contribution of 4% of my 2018 calendar year gross wages. Although it is the same monetary contribution, the additional contribution to my deferred compensation fund would normally increase my final average compensation, thereby increasing my annual pension payment upon retirement. In order to avoid this impact on my pension and thereby on the pension fund, I would recommend that this payment and any subsequent payments specifically not be included in the calculation of my FAC for retirement purposes. If council agrees with my request, then the attached amendment to item four, employee benefits of my agreement, would need to be approved. This has been reviewed by City Attorney Bill Pfeiffer, and he approved the language. The only change I made from when Bill reviewed it was I made it specifically clear that it would not count towards FAC. That was the only thing I added in. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Greg. And that was one of the questions I had had from the beginning. I guess to start off, when we considered his compensation, it was important that it didn't put a burden of any kind on the budget. And so I appreciate the fact that Greg has asked that it does not affect his FAC. Otherwise, in my opinion, he does a ton of work, and I feel I'm fine with compensating him the same as he would have had he not qualified for...
I had gotten old.
I didn't want to say your age, so I was going to do what you did. He qualified for the federal Medicare program at no fault of his own.
Time caught up with me.
And Bill has found that that's fine for us to make that employment change to his agreement, so that's my two cents. The only question I have, Bill, is that Greg, you said that it can't be considered toward that legally. He can say, "No, I don't want to consider it toward that as far as the kind of compensation." Were there any guidelines from the state or anything for figuring that out?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Mayor. I don't have an issue with that either. I mean, all of our other administrative staff is receiving this benefit, and, you know, I think the work that Greg's done for us, I think compensation should be exactly the same as in my mind. It's just another way to reimburse it for the effort, so I'm a favorite of this.
I agree that I think it seems fair, and I would say is that if there in future, or currently if there was another employee that received these health benefits, and to be equitable, it should be something that could be requested by anyone that found themselves in the same position as Greg, that received those benefits already. I know this is specifically language for his contract, but if the same situation happens some next year, I think that issue back on the table is an option for them as well. So this is my thought.
Yeah, there's very few that have a written agreement.
No, I'm the only one who has an agreement.
But not to say that it couldn't be entertained as well.
Yeah, because there are... I mean, generally what we have found, at least since I've been here, is most people are retiring before my age. And so it's not, you know, an issue, but it could be.
Sure.
There are people that could definitely happen.
Okay. It's a good point. Is that, as you told me earlier, Greg, not many as creative as you would think would stick around since then.
Yeah, I had a plan, and it all went out the window.
So just for clarification, should we have it added into our admin benefits then? So that's... Because we do have a list of our benefits.
Either that, or they can just request it individually at the time, whatever.
I guess I would leave that proposal up to you, or the city manager to develop admin benefits, if you'd like, or take it individually.
Yeah, okay.
Then others are required to... Probably the healthcare will be totally different anyway.
Yeah. Okay. I would move we approve the proposed amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is a 2018 Annual Monitoring Report.
For 2018, five companies were required to submit annual monitoring reports, which include total capital investments and current employment levels. Those five companies are Alro Steel, Dean Arbor Ford, Duville Johnston Corp., David Nishaw, and Alpena Lodging. Dean Arbor's certificate expired at the end of 2018, and Alro Steel's certificate will expire at the end of this year. To date, I have not received a report from Alpena Lodging after two attempts to contact them. Of the four companies that did submit reports, all have exceeded their initial capital investment projections. For 2017, David Nishaw did not have any employees, but for 2018 has 12 employees at Pompeos, although this falls short of the original projection of 15. These four companies represent over $4.4 million in capital investments and 68 employees. So it's kind of the same situation as last year. I had to kind of beg for the report from Alpena Lodging, and they finally gave it, but I sent a letter to the CEO and another woman within the company. She's the one that gave me the report last year, and she never sent it, and I emailed her and still never got it, so I don't know what to do.
Just my own suggestion would be that we'll notify whether it may be that it comes from me. I'm the one who worked with them on their brownfield and the abatement. And just tell them this is a requirement, it's not arduous, and if they don't, then we will look at what the agreement says, which I can't remember. It may allow a clawback, that they would have to repay abated taxes, or that we would contact the Department of Treasury regarding possibly revoking the CRA abatement.
Yeah, we can't revoke it, but we can make a recommendation.
But we can ask, you know, for the various reasons, and see what they do, but hopefully that will be enough to get them from now... We still want it for this year, but that from now on, they will, as long as they have that abatement. It isn't the brownfield, it's the abatement, which is a 10-year one, so as long as it's in play, they need to submit that every year.
I pulled up my report from last year that they submitted for 2017. They fell short on their capital investment projection. They had projected 8.25 million, and as of the end of '17, only had $5,497,000 spent. And they did meet their employment projection at 19. But I don't have those big ears for this year, obviously.
I don't know, for argument's sake, I don't know that they invested 2-point-something million dollars since last year.
No, I doubt they have.
I can expect that that's probably going to be the same, not to say that they shouldn't be reporting as well. It's a simple letter, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the fact that they fell short, we could look at it and say, "Well, you didn't meet the requirements." I mean, those are our estimates. The fact is, we still got a 90-room hotel downtown of good quality, so I don't personally see that as a problem. It's created some problems for them in terms of their brownfield plan, because they're not going to get the reimbursement they expected. But that's the way it is on that, and that won't change.
Yeah. I think your idea of the second notice, you know, or something like that, too, or something, was passing.
It was February 20th.
And even from what you see in the reports, and I don't understand, you know, exactly what kind of things they have to send in, but I'm assuming it's just more of a summary of what you're reading to us, and, you know, this is our investment level, and this is what we're at currently with employees. I mean, it's not a huge requirement.
No.
Last year, it was done by email, that they submitted it.
I wonder if maybe there's a corporate office holdup. Maybe they have to send everything to the corporate office.
The ones that she's contacted are in their office, where the president, chief financial officer, all of them are. So I don't see any excuse for not doing it.
You've done all you can do.
So we'll make another contact and go through the agreements and spell out what our options are, and hopefully that will stir them to toe the line from here on out.
Okay, good. We can probably receipt and file.
And we'll receive and file. Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, next up is Communications and Petitions. First is Thunder Bay Arts Council Incorporated, informational report on budget. Kim is here. Tim Kumine.
Thank you. I'm Tim Kumine, and this is the Department of Music. We're here to basically ask for a request in the budgeting cycle for additional sculptures. You received a letter detailing the history behind this project, which is officially Art Vision Alpena, a project of the Thunder Bay Arts Council. I think you're all familiar with us by now. And, you know, I have to say, the city's support of this project has really helped make it the success that it is. I think you could see in the initial paragraphs of the letter that the last couple of... Well, the last financial contribution, and then just generally the support that the city has given to not only the sculpture projects, but sort of giving life to this narrative of the arts being such an important part to our economic and community development is pretty tremendous. I think you could see just with sculptures, in the last two years, your contributions have helped generate leverage, about $100,000 of additional contributions from other government agencies, nonprofits, businesses, a whole slew of individuals, some of whom are longtime contributors to the arts, and many of whom are brand-new to the arts. Because this is a little different than, say, an event. It's kind of a physical, a long-lasting, tangible product that changes the image of our community, aesthetics of our community. So what we're asking for is a $5,000 contribution from the next budget fiscal year towards the next set of sculptures. What we've done so far is eight sculptures totaling about $100,000 in value, both in-kind and cash contributions. We're in a position now to potentially have two new sculptures by fall of 2019, if all goes well. And we're off to a good start, because I think last time as we were here, we reported that one individual came forward with a cash contribution to pay for essentially what will amount to two sculptures comprised into one location. And we're very pleased to reveal, actually, the location of this has yet to be determined. It's at the dog park, for sure. I think we shared that with you last time, and we're going to work with city staff to actually locate exactly where. But we're thinking somewhere along here. We want it to be visible from the road, but we also want it to be a nice entrance to the dog park, because the image is this. These are large-scale dogs. I don't know if you can see them hidden in the trees there, but this is essentially what we'll have, two sculptures that will be somehow positioned nicely with one another on a pedestal, that will allow for opportunities for photographs, and make it work within the aesthetics of that location. You can see the dimensions there, and these will be actually larger, because they'll be on top of some sort of pedestal. We're thinking sort of a bench pedestal, made of concrete. This just gives you another idea of what's involved. Very fitting, we worked with the donor on this. He wants to remain anonymous for now, but eventually we'll reveal. We still need additional funds to make this happen, because, as you can imagine, the foundation sometimes is almost as expensive as the sculpture itself. And we also need signage to complement and tie in with the signage of the other sculptures throughout town, along the bypath. So this just gives you an idea of what's involved. We're going with Dale Rogers Studio. This was all in consultation with the donor. They're out of Massachusetts. It's a pretty high-level art gallery. They were... Dale was a winner of the Art Prize at Grand Rapids, Michigan, back in 2012, and you can see some of the other awards that he's received around the country. You know, we tried to keep, actually, most of the sculptures that we've done so far are all either local or Michigan-based. This will be the first one outside of Michigan, but I think with the Knights sculpture, we're probably at a point where we can start diversifying it a little bit within reason. As you can see, his artwork is already exhibited in some pretty prominent communities in Michigan already. Fraser, Grand Lake, Grand Rapids, Harbor Springs, Snoop Buffalo, and Toski, and we're going to have Alpena out of there pretty soon. And those aren't bad communities to be associated with, I'd say. So you can check out the Dale Rogers Studio. It's dalerogerstudio.com if you want to learn more about the actual sculpture, of the sculptor himself and the sculpture. So that's one sculpture that we hope... That will definitely be done by fall. We're hoping, actually, for a region, early July unveiling, yeah, in the summer. So in the summer. And then it all goes well. This was the original plan for the first sculpture of this new phase of expansion, but when someone came forward with money and said, "Can you make this happen now?", we said, "Of course we can." But the second piece that is feasible, potentially before fall, is... Have you ever been to a city where you see, or maybe you've seen images of it, where the city's name is spelled out in very large blocks? Porto, for example, I've seen one. Well, this is all inspired by Brendan Keach, who's a local artist. These are photographs that he took putting Alpena signs in iconic locations around our community, and this was all a photography exhibit. I believe that was at the Besser Museum for a period of time. These are postcards, actually. But our idea is to have large-scale letters, either in steel, or we're even talking about the possibility of logs given, almost like Lincoln Logs, given our history as a logging community, and developing something on a very large scale. Not... This is just inspiration, but you can kind of get an idea of where we're hoping to go with this. So I think that is really what we wanted to present, to give you an idea of what's coming. Of course, you've received the brochure in the past, and you can kind of get a longer view of where this is going. We're working towards the 200th anniversary of our country, given the fact that it was the 200th anniversary that the Yacht Club started for, and the intent was to add sculptures, but as you all know, only one was achieved, the piece at Besser Museum, and just in the last two years, we've resurrected the idea. So we're using this hallmark event of our nation's, what is it, Sestres Centennial, to achieve another role. And is there anything more?
The only thing I mentioned, I don't know if the plans have been made for like a grand opening or an unveiling of the dog park.
We don't have a firm date yet. We don't have a firm date, but depending upon if you're looking at that timeframe, it may be something we could work to in the...
That would be the thing that I would think about, that we could maybe try and coordinate with something like that, where you could do both at the same time. The sculpture could be unveiled, and the dog park could be dedicated at that time, so... Yeah, once a date is established, perhaps...
Yeah, well, we can work in... If you're talking June or thereabouts...
Well, we're waiting for the sculpture to be... It's in the process of being created now.
Tell them that.
There's supposedly end of May, mid-to-late May, shipping it here, both of these pieces, so from Massachusetts. So if all goes well in that regard, we're hoping early, or late June or July.
Yeah, because you still would have to do the foundation.
Right, you have to pour the concrete and get all that.
And of course, that's part of the challenge now. We have the money for the sculpture, but we don't have the foundation, and we don't have the money for the second sculpture either, so we're working on that. I will add that we do have some money. The Besser Foundation has committed to us for three years, $5,000 each year, but it has to be matching money, and it has to be 20% of the total project. So your contribution would help us achieve securing that money as well, but they're definitely on board with us, as they have been in the past, it's the same formula they used for the previous projects, and they've been there from day one, just like you guys.
Excellent.
And then lastly, I don't know, I'm searching for information more than anything. This is the yacht club, and you may know there's an anchor there, and there's a stone, but not necessarily... This is the yacht club, and you may know there's an anchor there, and there's a stone that not necessarily a tombstone, but apparently it had a plaque on it from the International Shipmasters Association that has since been moved over to the sanctuary. The stone has been left vacant, and it's really kind of depressing because it does not look like a tombstone. And maybe that's what I was trying to reflect, but it's a major entry to our community. And I would really like to know who has control, ownership over that stone because we're thinking about having somebody etched on it. And before we can proceed, I've asked everyone.
Well, we can check. I don't know, I mean, how that works between the yacht club and the city because...
It's city property, because the yacht club does not claim the property.
No, the building is theirs, the land is ours. I don't know who's the anchor and that is.
The International Shipmasters Association, and they have not claimed.
Maybe our harboring master can find that out.
Yeah, that would be very helpful because it is a major entry to our community when you think about how much traffic passes by there every summer. And I've been here 18 years now, and it's looked like that for 18 years, so.
Yeah. Yeah, work with Don, you should be able to figure that out.
All right, great. What we were trying on doing is just repurposing the stone because that stone's, well, many thousands of dollars in value, priced at a crow. And it apparently is not cheap, so if you can repurpose it, that would be really wonderful. There have been suggestions of some sort of autumn theme, or the small sailboats, the England, not the England's, for that. Apparently there was a big fleet of these, what do I mean, that, and any of that, one suggestion was to have some sort of artistic etching on the stone, just to remind people that history, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
I just, kind of when you said about the name, putting the name up, and a lot of other cities will be led up there with the city of Amsterdam.
Yeah.
Or I'm Amsterdam.
Hollywood.
What?
Hollywood.
Yeah, I guess Hollywood.
You're Hollywood.
And the other one I've been, my picture took care of.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll receive file.
I move your receipt and file.
We'll cooperate in the budget and then see where it goes.
Sure. Okay.
Algora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next up is Wildlife Sanctuary, informational report and budget request.
My name is Terry Bujan. I'm the current chair for the Wildlife Sanctuary Board. As a city-appointed board, we currently have a full membership of nine. Since Island Park was purchased in 1985 through monies from Land Trust Fund, it was designated to be used for quiet recreation and education. So this has a lot to do with the work that the board does primarily on the island, but we supervise also the whole sanctuary. Some of the work we normally and regularly do is like cleaning the stairways and the trails from fallen trees. The jackpine is aging and dying, and a lot of it is being blown down. There are trees down that we have to take care of this spring, as a matter of fact. Another thing that was decided back in 1985 is that it would be a natural park, and we would go with native species and try to eliminate as much as possible any non-native invasives. So we get a lot of volunteer labor to help with the autumn olive cutting, nappy pulling, a lot of school groups do this. And a big invasive in recent years has been the frog bit in the water. We had eight pulls last summer, where we filled one-ton dump trucks each time, and up to 17 people in a kayak pulling weed, but hard to make a dent. And it was from canoe launch up toward Long Rapids Road, and it's so thick in there, all the way up there, you can't paddle through it. We also partnered with Huron Pines, and they have a plan, I believe, this summer involving cutting cattails first and then probably applying a specific herbicide. Sounds like, I'm not sure of the details, but our volunteers would then go to the outskirts and pick up any stray pieces of frog bit that we find and try and contain that from going out. Another sanctuary work that we did was to reset our trail, water trail. The buoys, a number of them have become off mark from the original GPS coordinates. Some have quite a long ways, so the Michigan DNR under Jeff Diamond helped us move those buoys back so our trail is back in use. And there was a pamphlet that shows that, that we picked up before we blow. Also, we went out with kayaks and cleaned up trash from the general sanctuary. There was things such as four-by-sixes floating out there, a lot of other trash. Well, not so much small trash, though. Surprisingly clean, recovered from the sand, even cemetery, all the way up to the island again. For educational programs, our River Rats program is still going strong. There were six of those, different aspects, science-related, with hands-on events due for kids, I believe through fourth grade. That took place in July last year. Our Artist in Residence Program is going into its eighth year. Charles Palmilius was our artist in residence last year. The artists spend about a week usually, if there's kind of more time, but in the sanctuary or surrounding area. And then they create artwork, and one piece of which they donate to the River Center. Currently, these pieces of artwork are displayed around town. I think at the library, there's two here at City Hall, and at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Building. All of this artwork will be at the River Center when that gets built. As far as our work for this year coming up, the board has decided to put an emphasis on erosion control. So we'll be doing blocking of trails that are not supposed to be there on the island. We want to keep people from going up and down the dunes. Sledding is not encouraged on the island. We'll probably be trying to block that hill over there. Also, the frog bit removal, that's scheduled, and control of the rest of this, invasives, which is an annual thing. As far as our budget goes, there is a substantial increase, even though the overall budget of 5,400 doesn't seem like a lot to me, but it's about $1,400 more than previous years. I've been requesting double the amount of bark to be spread on the island. I want it, you know, to designate the trails better so that people know what's a trail and what is not a trail. Also, most of the increase in the budget comes from materials to establish a habitat and erosion control area. We plan to use snow fence with T-posts. And I think we want to go from the lookout at the top of the hill, the Eustace Lookout, cover a portion of that, and then all the way down to the river, fence it off, maybe 50, probably 100 feet wide. And lead that up for three to five years. We can document the growth in there now and keep track of what happens without any human contact in that area because people are going up and down that slope all the time and preventing growth and the growing threats and that going down to the river. Other than that, the rest of the budget is pretty much an annual thing for a few signs, framing of the Artist in Residence piece of work. And the only other thing is we need to give a donation to Huron Pines of $2,000. But we're going to contribute 1,000 of that from this year's budget, which we have, and then next year would be another thousand. We did this once before and get a lot of good from that. That's just gives us a lot of help in controlling the invasives on the island and in the sanctuary.
I don't, I have a couple of questions about the erosion control and things of that nature, but it doesn't really pertain to the budget, so perhaps I'll just come to one of your meetings and discuss that.
Erosion control there is?
Yeah. I guess I just like the no sledding. I know that kids have sledded there for, what does something in the winter time do to...
Well, that's a big problem, not with tourism on the island, but with locals, who still think of it as sportsman's island, which it is not.
Right.
And those kinds of activities, we don't encourage, no bikes, no sleds. Group activities, like group exercise activities, things like that.
Okay.
We want it to be a natural area. You can go, take your camera, take your binoculars, go for a walk, observe nature, stay on the trails.
That's been pretty much the policy when the island was acquired, was that it was to be as much as possible in its natural condition, discourage a lot of heavy active recreation. And I know the, that area where they have doing sliding, even when I worked with the Wildlife Sanctuary Board, that was always a problem because it did huge amount of damage in terms of the plant material there. And then, of course, erosion occurs because the plant material is removed or dies off.
That area looked like it had a lot of people who was running up and are walking up it this year for some reason, too. It was pretty much fairer.
Yeah. What you see in a lot of lake shore areas who have sand dunes, when I was way back with the city of Muskegon, we did a lot of planting of dune grasses, and they basically began to, you know, not let any kind of vehicle on those dunes. But even walking was restricted to specific areas because of the damage that was done. So this is very similar, on a much smaller scale, but it's still doing the same type of damage.
It's such a fragile area.
Things changed when the bridge was being built, so no one could get on the island for two summers, pretty much. And the growth on the dunes was quite lush, but it's right back to being more awful already on the sand dunes than that.
Okay.
They're used to swim.
All right, sounds good. Appreciate the report, Terry. We'll see if we can receive a phone.
Second.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Algora?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next up, unfinished business. Revised ordinance number 19-442, prohibit use of marijuana in public places within the city of Alpena. Discussion and first reading.
This is an ordinance of the city of Alpena, Michigan, amending Chapter 54 offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 1 in general, and to add Section 5411. Be it ordained by the municipal council of the city of Alpena, state of Michigan, as follows. Chapter 54 offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 1 in general, Section 54-11 marijuana and marijuana accessories. A, no person shall smoke, vape, cultivate, distribute, sell, or display marijuana in any form or marijuana accessories in a building owned or operated by the city of Alpena. B, no person shall smoke or vape in any form in a public place within the boundaries of the city of Alpena, including, what not limited to, any street, sidewalk, highway, alley, park, or parking lot located therein, or the city marina or city beaches. C, smoke or vape means possessing a cigarette, e-cigarette, cigar pipe, or similar apparatus that contains marijuana or cannabis that is lighted or burned. D, any person violating this section shall be responsible for civil infraction and shall be assessed a civil fine not to exceed $500. And the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect 10 days after being adopted by the municipal council and duly published.
So we've, Mark, we've amended this twice now.
Twice, yeah.
And I honestly don't mean to send you back to the drawing board, but I do have a question. I'm killing you, Eric. Sorry. C.
Yes.
C reads, "Smoke and vape means possessing a cigarette, e-cigarette, cigarette pipe apparatus that contains marijuana or cannabis that is lighted or burned." So, so that is actually lit and burning, or, or means that that person can't even possess those on city property, like prior to lighting and burning?
Yeah, the instrument has to be something that can be either lighted or burned.
Or is lit. Okay, and hear me out.
Yep.
This is because I'm not sure what, I want to make sure that the intent of this ordinance is what, at least my intent is, before I vote on it, and perhaps yours as well. So it's legal for someone to carry up to 2.5 grams. And I'm assuming it would also be legal for them to carry an apparatus as to smoke that with. Now, if they're carrying it and they walk down the sidewalk and it's in their pockets or whatever, they're not, they're not smoking it, vaping it, cultivating it, distributing it, processing, selling it, or displaying it. But C means, says that smoking and vaping means possessing it. But if you read on at the very end, it says that is lighted or burned. So, so it's, it's okay for them to possess it in their means without, without anyone seeing it, but until they light it.
Correct. They're not, not to use it in a public place.
Not to use it, okay. I just, just because the words are legal stuff that only you understand, I want to make sure. I just wanted to make sure because it says means possessing it.
Yeah.
But, but the intent is, is that they can possess it because it's legal up until the point where they get it out and light it on city property.
Till they use it, correct.
Or use it, or in any way.
And just so you know, there is a new bill that's been introduced about the issue of vaping that will, is, is going to help in terms of minors using it and those things, if that gets passed. It was just introduced within the last, I'm going to say, a week or two.
Okay.
And I think, actually, I think Rep. Aller is part of the folks that are introducing it. So that'll help Officer Tim and some things that are going on in the school environment. But yeah, this is, it's not a violation to have it in your pocket and carry it down the street, but using it would be the violation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on the language. I appreciate it. This is definitely...
Lieutenant Hamp says it's ounces, not grams.
Oh, see, that's how much I know.
2.5 ounces.
This is, for me, this is definitely a lot more akin to what my intention was. And hours, all of ours happened, so. You captured it. And you captured it. And again, this is, just pertains to, to city-owned buildings and property.
Correct.
Yeah, or public.
Public, public spaces, yeah.
Public spaces.
And including sidewalks?
The street.
I mean, we're not...
Streets, alleys.
Yep.
Parks, not a ring of any of them.
The city land, then the city land.
Yeah, this would, just so you know, I mean, this would not prohibit somebody from sitting on their front porch and using the product.
Right.
And I don't think we can regulate that anyways in light of its...
And I assume it also means, and I have no idea what they're doing, but if you're at the fairgrounds or at the county courthouse, on those grounds, those are not our properties.
Correct.
So they would not be, that would be up to the county to do something about there if that's, you know, for a public space, unless they're relying on what the law says. And who knows, when it's all said and done, it may say exactly what we want, and this becomes perforal.
But it doesn't right now.
But right now, it's at least a question mark. So that's why we're doing it.
And this is a first reading, so unless we have any other questions, this will be back for second reading.
Correct.
Take effect 10 days after our next meeting.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Nothing else for that? Thank you, Bill. New business, A is the county ambulance contract.
Bill?
Chief?
The county ambulance.
I assumed that it was you. I assumed that it was you.
He was asleep. Good evening. Sorry about that. We had a recent conversation in the back row.
Oh, you're good.
For about forty years, the city of Alpena Fire Department provided ambulance service to seventeen hundred square miles of Alpena County, for the last thirty, that being advanced life support ambulance service. The contract that we were operating under with the county expired at the end of December. We've been able to, with Mr. Sundin's help, negotiate a new contract with no loss of service whatsoever. The new contract is a two-year term to align with the ambulance millage, and the commissioners are aware that the ambulance millage really needs to go up next time around. The problem is that it was originally a one-mill millage, it's now a point nine seven because of proposal A and headly, but the value of that millage is much less now than it was in years past because of the two thousand eight recession. So operating within the dollars that are available has been a challenge. So it's a two-year contract. Each year of the two years, we see a two percent increase. We had no increases for the last five years, so we're certainly appreciative of that because our labor costs do go up each year. The contract includes one new ambulance, complete with cot and loading system, and that will be specked out here shortly. But the most important part is the last section in my memo, and that is that the long-distance ALS transfer program is seen as part of the mission to care for our citizens. It's seen as part of the county ambulance service's mission to take care of the patients from the time that they have a medical emergency to the time that they get to the care that they need. And many times, that care is not in Alpena. They may need something farther away. If so, that's all part of the initial thing, and that really ends the, this is a city truck and that's a county truck, and you better not use the wrong truck and what have you. It's really all one service. And I think that's a really big deal that the county's partnering with us in that way. So what we're looking for is, if it's permissible with you, we'd like to see you sign this contract, which has been approved by the county, and we'll plug along for another two years.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. And you just stated that it had already been, this has been approved by the county already.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Chief? All the way to his seat.
Just want to build a little change of review. No concerns or issues. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with it.
I will wait for the wonderful service agreement after this.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Holagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Ocean Carey.
Thank you, Chief. Next up, downtown bike parking improvements. Steve?
City staff has been evaluating the potential for installing bike parking shelters within the downtown area. The concept behind this is to reduce or relocate the number of other bike rack planters that have been used throughout the downtown in the past, and this would open up the sidewalk area for use by pedestrians and other activities, having tables and things for eating and such like this. To that end, the engineering department investigated various covered bike facilities, locations, and solicited pricing for the structures and evaluated costs for the installation of the structures. Locations were evaluated with three locations selected, two of which would be done as part, as phase one of the project, with a third to be further evaluated based on the usage of the other two facilities. The locations selected for the first two installs are adjacent to the DDA building near, in Culloden Plaza, and then also at the corner of Second Avenue and Carter Street as part of the intersection reconstruction. The graphics are attached. I've got them here as well, just for discussion if you want to talk about the locations. The information regarding the style, location, and cost was then presented to the DDA Design Committee, as well as the DDA Parking Committee, and then also the full DDA Board. All entities concurred that the lowest cost structure was also the most aesthetic and provided what the city and these entities were looking for in a bike parking structure. When this project was discussed with the full DDA Board, the city also solicited financial commitment towards this project. The DDA Board unanimously, unanimously, easy for me to say, supported the concept and committed ten thousand dollars for the parking structure installation costs. The city has budgeted fifteen thousand dollars towards this project, which then can, this whole, the whole first phase can then be completed in that twenty-five thousand dollar budget. This includes, you know, costs for the installation, costs for additional concrete that needs to be done, concrete work, we would have to tear out certain sections and replace it with eight-inch that concrete where the, there, things are going to be fastened down, things like that, some of that work, some of the curving that would occur at Second and Carter, that is included in these prices. What we would do at this point is we would just request authorization from city council to proceed forward with the project. The city would purchase the structure directly and then utilize existing contracts and other contracted services that we have in place right now to complete the installation and other items of work associated with installation.
It's definitely in keeping with our aesthetics, I guess. My question was more on the, you know, just looking to always save some money. Did you perchance take these, take these specific plans to anyone local to see if you could, because the prices that you're, that I'm seeing on these aren't significant. I mean, they don't seem overpriced, but the freight to get them here is twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars or whatever it was. Is there a chance that someone here could fab those and get us out of the freight charges that...
We could, you know, we could certainly look at that, but the thing that concerned me is that the price for the particular structures we're looking at is considerably less than the other four or five that I looked at, so I'm thinking, these guys are going to be pretty low. I mean, I could certainly, certainly shop around and look at locally at doing a fabrication.
In the event, so...
And then I'm not sure about the, whatever that, what is that, Plexiglas?
That's what I was going to say, Plexiglas portion, the arch portion.
It's an arch, yeah.
Might be a little bit difficult to do initially anyway, but the metal, I'm certain that somewhere out here could certainly look together, yeah.
Okay, just a thought.
Just the whole package together, though, I just don't know, and those are, you know, these are guaranteed, you know, to, you know, they're made to not, I guess, age with the sun and things like that. They're not, you know, they're solar, you know, protected from the solar.
Protected, okay.
Solar rays, things like that, so it's, they're pretty specific, pretty tailored to the situation, I guess.
Okay. Because the price does look pretty good, and now you've even said that it's significantly less than others, these are...
Yeah, just...
...warranted on wind and things like that. But, yeah.
Shipping setup, you know, the vendor.
Yeah, the vendor, you know, some of them, they were kind of all aboard with the freight. And it's interesting, because the company that was the least involved with the structure itself was a little bit more on the freight. Some of them were, you know, eat or dollars for freight, so... But yeah, they started shipping for you and they bring it right to the site, and they offload it with the one guy that's driving the truck, and then, you know, you have to be there to kind of help, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, it, you know, a lot of the things is, you know, some of the, dealing a lot with freight conveyor business and stuff like that, we have a lot of dedicated vehicles around here, too, that may be another option to take a look at, that, you know, so the hot chats going on out here and stuff, depending on the size, will probably be a bit less if we can't find something locally, maybe the freight might be something that we can look into as well.
Yeah.
There are a lot of, a lot of trucking companies out here do dedicate trucks that, you know, and picking up and bringing back into this area. That's all accounted for.
Where's this actually...
I was just trying to think of which of these particular companies I...
It's out of California, you know, you're probably not going to be...
No, there's, most of the companies I looked at were either Michigan or just outside of Michigan, so I think this one might be Michigan-based.
Yeah, because it just seems really excessive.
Yeah, I was going to say, typically, you get that one company setting up the freight for you because they'll find a trucking company, and what they'll do is they'll put an additional twenty-five to thirty-five percent on top of that for freight, so that's why I would look into what we have around here and see if there's options for us to pick up.
And you actually don't, they told me, a lot of them told me, that you don't get a real freight number until you actually make the order. So this was just an estimate.
Okay.
They're going to look at the classification, if it's a full-load truck or not, so...
While you're looking at options, I'm behind the idea of having central location, close to, but not directly, like in the middle of where it's going on, you know, racing that and getting away from the individual racks. But, I was going to say, because this plan has, you know, four U-racks at one location and five at another, so if we're close to eighteen thou, well, for seventeen thousand dollars, we're creating eighteen bike, eighteen bike park spots. And I think moving forward, looking at the needs, especially, you know, more and more events where hundreds of people are coming downtown in a given day, and a lot of people do ride their bikes, if we're going to really have a destination point where we're trying to get bike parking lots opposed to all these individual ones, would it make sense to have more racks than this four, for example, which looks like to help the eight bikes? And I first saw the shelter, I thought, well, it's kind of cool looking. Then I saw the prices, ninety-three percent, well, over that was the freight, of the cost for the proposal, so only seven percent is actually the racks that people are catching the bikes to, you know, the actual material costs. If people are on bikes, they tend to not, they tend to know there's going to be weather. I question the value of the shelters at all, considering that you could do so many more bike parking solutions throughout the downtown and the entire city, because we're contributing fifteen thousand dollars to the city funds, not, you know, only to the DDA. And there are parks I haven't seen a single bike rack at all, by the Van Shell, the Kitty Park, with hundreds, not thousands of people there every week, and there's not a single bike rack right there. Just, these are my thoughts as far as where we're in. Like I said, having more, definitely, having, but the shelters themselves are spending two point eight percent on just the material costs on archway that, you know, that rains straight down most of the time anyway. The rains, you tend to have a little, you know, bikes are going to get wet even under the shelters, if that's the purpose. And most of the parking hanging out there, there's parking the bikes to go explore the downtown, and I think that's great to not get down. So I said, I just don't see spending that much, like one, seven percent on the racks, only because we have a lot more bike parking solution, even if you have a couple more spots or a couple more spaces, even by taking out the poles for the shelters, to have more bike parking there. The cost of each of the racks is only a hundred and twenty million dollars for those U-racks. And I've seen a lot of communities, I've been to a lot, I noticed where they have creative fun racks, but shelters aren't generally part of them, the ones I've seen. And I'd say they can create a vibrant, local environment, but I don't know, spend that much to me on just the shelter portion for only eighteen bike spots. I just don't see it.
Could I, could I ask you to clarify something? Did you say that at the Kitty Park down on the bay, is that what you said?
Right.
Did you say there are no bike racks down there?
Right now, there are, there are racks every summer, and all the bikes are sitting on the ground, but enters to the park, because at the Kitty Park, you know, there's hundreds of people going to movies and concerts on the bay nonstop, all summer long, and theater at the bay. There's some basketball courts, and there's a little one by the pier, but considering, and the one, there's a one that, you know, people, you can drive around town and see them, there's the one at Thompson Park, it's right there next, it's on State Street, and it's been there for, I'm guessing, forty years, I don't know. It's right there next to the road, it's still there, but it's really bent on a shape and really bent in poor condition. So if we're going to commit fifteen thousand dollars on the city funds, I don't, I still think downtown is crucial, and adding lots more bike parking in strategic locations is a part. But like I said, we're all fighting the budget, and we're all asking people to, you know, to give more in their taxes, and I think providing more solutions with those funds would be better stewardship.
I guess, since initially this whole thing came out of, not this year's, but the previous year's state of the city, my suggestion, and I've had talks with various people, you know, within the DDA and that about it. One, we know, and I know, and I've certainly been in places in Europe where they have large bicycle parking lots, from some that just took a city lot and converted it to ones such as in the city of Amsterdam, where it's about three stories high, three tiers, and holds literally thousands of bicycles, and I have no idea how people ever find theirs once they take them there and put them in. But they, they're, you know, all those scales, we know that there's a habit right now, that people by habit are used to taking their bikes and parking them right there on the sidewalks. Really wasn't a problem when all those racks were initially put in. We didn't have the dining out on the sidewalk. We didn't have people putting out all the planters and the other things, where, we do not have wide sidewalks. You go to a lot of cities, they are far wider. So the idea is, you know, we ban, I'm pretty sure we ban skateboards and rollerblading on our sidewalks right downtown because of that intermix with pedestrians and others that it's not safe. Well, bicycle, at least I think, is even worse than that. So the idea is to eventually get them off, but we know we're not going to change habits overnight. So the intent was, these are almost like pilot projects that we're putting in. No, they're not huge, however, even though, yes, you have four, and that's technically for eight bikes, when you add in those supports for the structure themselves, I'll guarantee you, they will be connected to those as well. So you'll probably see, you know, fifty percent as many bikes as what it's designed for. It's just the nature of the beast on how people do things. And that's fine. The, eventually, yes, we, if things go well, people get used to using them, then we will be looking at additional ones. Actually, the third one that we had talked about, which was next to the, on Third Avenue there, Third River, would be probably something more like at least twenty bikes, as far as a rep, because, one, there's the room there to do it. The question is, is that the best location for it? And that's one reason we were kind of waiting on that. As far as the shelters, a lot of that was also of creating an identity within the downtown. I certainly agree with the councilwoman a hundred percent that we need more bike racks. I've always been a proponent of that. In fact, I even made complaints when I've gone to what was Alpena Medical Arts in the past and say, you know, your doctor's office, but you don't have a bike rack. I have to chain out front to one of your lamp posts. And they do have a bike rack out back for their employees, but not for, I guess they figure we're all too sick when we come there and we wouldn't ride a bike, I guess. But businesses, we require under ordinance, and we should add others, and we probably should have been doing it for years. And it's easy enough for us to add that money into the parks budget to put five thousand dollars a year over the next, you know, however many years it takes, to begin placing them strategically. When we've done major improvements, we've included them, such as when we did the pavilion and restrooms at Starlight Beach, we put in bike racks.
But then at the other end, not...
Right, no, no, I agree. There is nothing at the other end. For the most part, not a lot was done there. Do they need them? Yes. And so those are all things that do need to be done. I, at least myself, see this as an issue, these two issues are related because they both deal with bikes, but they are separate. And we can certainly look at the budget and put money in this coming year for adding bicycle racks in the parks, and then, you know, go as far as they will go with the money, and then next, the year after, continue that budgeting until we get what we should have. Are we, right now, in some places, we probably don't need a lot of bike, in the way of bike racks, because of just the nature of what people use. In other areas, we probably certainly can use a lot more than what we have, which in some cases, as you pointed out, is zero.
Like poles that have been used in that section.
Yes. And I've done that, and I've done it around trees, and everybody does. So those are things that we do need to do. I think, at least within the downtown, it's a first step of what will be a multi-step process. To wean people off, I've got to, kind of like they sometimes do with cars, I've got to park my bike directly in front of the store that I'm going to, or it's inconvenient. This may be, I'm not sure what it is, but I will say, I feel like myself, if I could ride my bike downtown, I can park it at some perimeter location and walk a couple blocks within the downtown, because downtown is pretty much two by two in terms of blocks. So it isn't large and can easily be traversed quickly walking. So that was the reason, yes, they are the biggest expense, the shelters. The feeling with the design committee, the DDA as a whole, with staff, was that one thing we've been trying to do, whether we were using city funds, DDA funds, and usually a combination, was creating that identity for the downtown. It's very different than it was when I came here twenty years ago, and it's important. Everybody feels it's important to create, and that, and we felt these served that purpose. True, yes, if you have a blowing rainstorm, they're going to get wet. But same time, if the sun's out and it's... But same time, if the sun's out and it's beating down and it's ninety degrees, it can be protected so that you don't get out and it's, you know, hot, or whatever, it adds shade as well, so, you know, the recommendation at least through, out the DDA and with staff is that we go with this proposal, we'll see how it all works out, hopefully it will work, and we can get some other strategic areas that are even larger.
I, I don't understand why it wouldn't be wonderful to have more, maybe a combination of these, the brand is very important to me, I know when I drive to, through a town, I notice things like this, I, I want to come back and see what else they've done, it's, it's very important to me, the branding is. There's nothing about a rusty bike rack chained to somebody's pole, some light pole, with bikes just kind of thrown willy-nilly all over, there's nothing more tacky, that's, that's just the best word I can think of than that. So, anything that causes us to be a little bit more careful, look a little nicer, pay attention to what we're doing, is something I, I'm for. And, and this is beautiful, it doesn't have to be this exact thing, but I would, I would certainly want something that looks as nice as this.
Well, I am on DDA design, so this is something that we took up. Amber, we did discuss the, you know, what you actually lock them to is relatively inexpensive, so, you know, the canopy is the biggest part of it. We also discussed, because Scoops wanted something closer to them, we're, and the purpose of these is to get some of the racks off the sidewalk. So they may be looking to put some of the loops in Culligan Plaza to satisfy some of those other needs, that's one of the things we discussed the other day in design. I do understand the money, I do, I get it, but I think this is probably a good start, and if we need to cut costs and just put in loops here and there, we can do that. I'm not sure, in my opinion, the one at the, at, right next to the DDA building is the best spot, but it's, you know, and people, better than I, decided that it was. Because in my opinion, this, if I was doing it, would be better served up in Culligan Plaza, where more people.
And that was discussed, thought about, the one thing is that if we're going to make improvements to that park, it would be better for the plaza to wait on that, and depending upon what the final design and how the use is, it may not make sense to put a shelter there for those, with those bikes, because it could interfere with other things where that, in terms of the use of the plaza. So, I mean, that's the case, I think, as we look at all of it, some of them, it makes perfect sense to have canopies over, even if they're for twenty bikes, but somewhere else, it may not make sense, and that's just going to be part of the process as we look at these, moving forward.
But I think that, because I'm on Culligan Plaza too, but I think that some of the improvements, the bigger improvements to Culligan Plaza will take quite a few years to come, I think that, and this is just me, that this particular bike rack would be better served up there, and if we ever needed to move it, we could move it. And if it was in, if it was in the way, we could, when we did improvements to Culligan Plaza, it can always be moved.
We can look at that and, and see whether or not it makes sense, because we got to, you know, know that the, the trees there, the, the Santa House, those things. So we can take a look at it, I mean, it's, doesn't mean it absolutely, you know, we can take it back to the DDA to ask them about if we relocated it, knowing it will very likely have to be relocated, or at least removed initially, yeah, once improvements to the plaza occur. So I mean, those are always, you know, options that are, that could be done.
It seems it would be very important to not put, not put them, if, if this passes, in areas that are a little more remote or in the corner, because of graffiti and the other things that happen, just, or, it's just going to happen. But if we're going to have something so nice, it might be nice for it to be out so we can all keep an eye on it. I'm not saying anybody would ever put graffiti on it, but.
Yeah, most sites then, at least that were initially proposed, are, are visible, they're not, they're not hidden.
So, I, I, I understand what Councilmember Hess was saying, and I guess that's still part of the question, because we're saying, we're saying that we want to spend this on these bike racks, but we also want to put in bike racks in other areas that desperately need them, and no one is, no one's contending that, but we have to wait and put that into a budget later, when we're basically just questioning, how important is the shelter? Is it, because I'm looking at the shelter, and I think it looks pretty cool, and I'm not even questioning what they're charging for it, because that looks like a realistic number to charge for it, but, how, and, and I'm not on the committee, so maybe the, but apparently they discussed the fact that the shelter is, is, she's right, it, it's practically impractical, because if it's raining, it's, they're going to get wet, it's not that big, there's no signs on it or anything. I don't know what the value of the, of the solar value protection is of these roofs, but if they're chosen, so they stick out and they look good, and people will see them from a distance and say, oh, there's a, there's a bike rack, I'm not sure if I saw this two blocks away, if I would recognize that as a bike rack shelter, or if I would just have to know that it's there, I don't know.
Signs can be created, say, bike parking sign, you know, they do the same thing as far as giving attention, which, you know, for very minimal cost, is the thought. I guess I get the idea of wanting for people to see clearly where, where they are, but there are, could be simple sign adaption for.
Yeah, the money that's been budgeted both with the DDA and the city was for the downtown. We're looking outside the downtown, that's fine, if we put it in the next year's budget, I mean, it could be done yet during the summer, we could decide where we want to put them, you know, the first ones, and then order them and have them installed, so it's not like it's a year or two years down the road, that could be started very quickly, doing that, and I would not see when you're putting them in the parks that you're going to go and have shelters and things of that sort, that you would do that.
It would be a smaller scale, just a general bike rack, and I think that, you know, it's good that she had pointed that out, to us of, of the needs in the different, various parks and stuff. I like the looks of the structure too, and, and, you know, working with company and doing some things, we have to move brands, things like this, and our, our city, you know, have noticed that the artwork around that we heard about earlier, obviously is building up since before hand. People are coming here to see that walk and take the walk along the bike path. This is a little out of that range, but it's still, it's, it's something unique to the downtown, you know, it's a structure that can be put in place and basically used for that, and when I'm in other cities, I look for some of the unique, unique bike racks, and I think this, this myself, I liked, when I originally saw that, and knowing a little bit about manufacturing and stuff like that, I wasn't too concerned with the price on, on that end of it too, just for the time that it would put in to those and the cost of, you know, fabrication, and I didn't think they were too far out of line. So, other than the shipping, you know, I had the same concern that everyone else did, so, but, I like the racks, and I think they did a good job of looking at the designs and putting it together, I think it covers, you know, what I had in mind for different structures of parking the bicycles, and drawing that down as a bicycle-friendly downtown, is my thoughts.
And I think the only argument, if you want to call it an argument or discussion, is the fact that we've budgeted fifteen thousand dollars towards this project, and perhaps myself feel that, that if sixty-four hundred and eighty-four hundred weren't contributed to the shelter itself, that could have been used as additional bike racks, even in the downtown area, behind.
Dog park, don't that got to be more?
The dog park, the owl, things of that nature, I guess that's the only argument, but.
My thought is those, the value of them based on how much other good things can be done in the downtown, or, but, but I think that there's, you know, whether it's, I don't know when, agreement was made at fifteen thousand, would go to the downtown specifically for bike parking, I don't remember going on it, last year or something, before that, I think.
Well, it was put into the CIP in the budget for the current fiscal year, there was money budgeted.
Specifically for bike parking.
And it, and everything was for downtown that we were talking about.
Yeah, we could always start an adopting program, if you have businesses, adopt a, a bike shelter, or a bike rack, or whatever, and try to raise some money, and then, I think there are a lot of creative ways to make it happen, without anybody suffering.
So, there was a couple of different suggestions out there, are we looking to take some action on this specific request tonight, is anyone request table for further review from staff? I'm just trying to follow along here, because you had suggested looking at fabrications there, so.
You know, I, I just, Amber makes a very good valid point, and so, but I, but I'm neither on the design committee of the DDA, so I don't really know, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to say, I mean, they are, it, it's pretty cool looking, I'm not arguing that, but can we get something that's pretty cool looking, like some of her suggestions in the previous email, it looked like a spiral fish, some artsy, artsy kind of bike racks, and I don't know, just for that part.
As I said in my email when you brought that up, and I've seen these, and some of them are really good, very functional, and then there are others that you get done and you get them, and they're not very user friendly, yeah, they're not very user-friendly. And then, of course, the fancy, you get, Steve was even looking up some, and they wouldn't even give you a price, you have to contact them directly to get a price, so you know they're generally higher.
And then you find out that they cost eight grand.
Yeah, but.
I know the ones that look like bikes though, like this, looks like a bike, and it could have up to four bikes on it, and you buy them for one fifty dollars, like, you know, I mean, I was just saying, I did, you know, did some research, and there are some creative looking racks that are kind of fun, and I've seen in a lot of communities where they have really neat shapes that look like bikes, as obviously the bikes, right, or there's ones like a dog, the dog park, but you're just paying for the basic structure, not like the shelter. And I said my initial thought when I saw them, oh, they're kind of cool looking, but then when I really started thinking about just our needs in the downtown, and I live a few blocks from downtown, I'm down constantly on my bike in the summer, I just started thinking about that.
I, I guess I would just say, if the council's intent is they don't want to spend the money on the shelters, is I would go back to the DDA at its next meeting, that I'm a member of, and tell, and find out, one, is that a priority for them to have those shelters? If it is, council won't fund it, but if you want it, you'll need to basically increase your funding to, to fifteen thousand to cover the, the two shelters, and the city will pitch in on the concrete and the, and the racks themselves. And then, if the city wants to put in other bike racks elsewhere, I, in terms of ones that are eventually going to replace the ones on the sidewalk, I don't think either the parking committee or any of us, or the staff, are ready to go out and just start building bike parking areas, because of the fact that we got to get people to use them first, and get used to that type of thing, and when we see people, then more can be added. If we just put them out, I'd hate to do it, and find out, you know, unless we're going to ban the other ones on the sidewalk and say, you can't park your bikes on the sidewalk, and basically making an ordinance, as we've done with rollerblading, skateboarding, and force them out, literally force them into those, you know, that's about the only other way. What we're trying to do is develop a habit on a positive aspect, but if, if the DDA, you know, wants those shelters, and council doesn't want to fund, then it will be up to them, how important are they to them? And then they can make that decision. All it does is delay when they get in, and we haven't hit them for this long, it's, I guess you could argue it's not going to hurt if it's a little bit longer.
Was there a lot of discussion on the committee as far as whether?
No, this kind of, just, just so everybody knows, this kind of landed on our plate, and what you see is kind of what we talked about, like, kind of, it was kind of a done deal.
Well, it started in the parking committee, that's where it started, and it was presented as an idea, and they liked it.
And you look at it and you go, oh, okay. I didn't realize that it was, because I was under the impression, when we talked about it at our last meeting that we just had, was that this would be a project that was implemented next year, because we were also having discussion about what we were going to do to make the current bike racks make it through another year, because we have some that are really in bad shape, and the cost to rehab those just to get them through this year. So, and maybe that was my misunderstanding, but I thought that this was going to happen next year.
There was talk about whether it could, if we did it within the current budget year or the beginning of the next, so it wasn't going to be something that, when we said next year, was going to be not until 2020 that we'd be doing it, it would still be in 2019, whether it's in June, whether it's in July, a lot of it depends when we get everything and so forth, so which year would, you know, when it would actually occur, it was never the intent that they were not going to put the bike racks out on the sidewalks again this year.
Oh, no.
That was always intended.
Right.
We knew that was still going to be there.
And some of those may disappear, because some of the bike racks that are currently on the sidewalk, because some of them are in such bad shape, and we don't want to spend the money to rebuild them.
I would suggest, rather than vote on this and, and send the wrong message to both the DDA and the DDA parking committee.
Parking.
Can, perhaps we can table this, and since you guys are both on the committee, maybe just take our comments and concerns back to them, and then just, and then just redo it after their next meeting. I mean, and if they say, and, and at that time, they can say, well, look, it looks like this might fail, so we better have a discussion as to whether the DDA wants to fully fund the shelter part or not. We haven't really voted on that yet, but it might give them an opportunity to, to plan ahead, and, and maybe just question as to whether they can, whether they would even live without the shelters and do more. Does that sound reasonable? Rather than voting, and it may not, it may even pass, I'm not really sure, I don't really get a big vibe.
I said, if anybody wants to get more information on this decision for the Segoville and funding aspects or whatever, I've never had an issue with that.
Let's, let's, let's do that.
So, I'm moving, capable of.
That might give Steve some time to look into local fabrication, and maybe question the shipping, kind of everything we talked about. Probably had to watch the tape, we talked for a while.
Me too.
Let's do that, then.
Okay, Nielsen?
Yes.
Sorry. Know what?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And we adjourned to a closed session to discuss water and civil litigation in the middle of the season.
Second.
Know what?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes, sorry.
Motion carried.
So sorry.
Steve?